I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Morcott. Brooke.
Mayor Protim, Ricky Goslin.
President.
Councilmember Brooke Morcott.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swear.
Thank you. Public comment? Uh, we don't have any comment cards tonight? Okay, well, I'll remind you to please put your cell phones on and vibrate. Uh, you can only do that then, and we will move on to item two.
Acceptance of the minutes of, this is wrong, I'm sorry, acceptance of the minutes of April 6, 2021, which will publish on April 21, 21.
So moved. So moved by Mayor Protim. Do I have a second, Councilwoman Morcott? Is there any discussion about our minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, item 3A.
Resolution 2134, appointing Jay Gorzado as new Iberia City Marshal to fill vacancy and unexpired term of Haywood Tony Miguez.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Morcott and the second, uh, I think it was Councilman Broussard. Is there any discussion on this item?
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Is he currently, I mean, he's working in the, um.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And he's the, is he the most senior person?
Uh, well, he stepped up for the job. We have, you can appoint the chief deputy or you can appoint someone else. The chief deputy elected not to do it, and so Mr. Jay's doing it. He did it last time. You remember, you know, Vic had passed away, and he was a chief deputy then. He filled the spot then. He did that for the time. He's not running for the position. It, it works very well. And between he and Coach and Johnny, they all three worked together very well, and I've been meeting with them for, you know, a little while now. And so kind of as a consensus, they were thinking, you know, Jay did it last time, Jay, Jay will do it again. Uh, Coach and Jay have been there for years and are a wealth of knowledge. Johnny's kind of new on the block, but he, he's caught on pretty quick. So I, I think we're in good hands. And so, uh, that's, that's where we are. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
So we would stay until January 1 of 2022?
No, till the election, the elec-, well, the election will come in October. What he's got to get sworn in. So the election will be in October. There could be a runoff in November, and then, yeah, he'll stay till, till it'll be January when the term starts. But he might, uh, last time we didn't do that. Last time he won, and they filled the spot earlier.
Okay, so there's no.
Oh, everybody, that's Jay.
When the race was done, that was it. I was no longer in.
The new march was stepped in when he was sworn in.
Right, right, because he was filling the remainder of the term. So you're right, that's probably exactly how that'll work. Anybody else? We don't take any public comment at this time. Anybody else in the council? Great, well, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. I, I want to thank you, Jay, for taking us again, and to the whole staff for the job y'all been doing. Uh, you know, y'all have been the rock through a whole lot of issues and twists and turns, and I can't thank y'all enough. Uh, we got a good team. Appreciate it.
Well, we'll, uh, this is transition two.
Yes, sir. We know.
This is transition team two.
Yep, yep. Well, thank you all very much.
All right, thank you all, thank you all.
Item 3B.
Resolution 21 dash 35, ordering and calling a special election to fill the vacancy of city marshal, city court, city of New Iberia, and taking other matters in connection therewith.
So moved. So moved by the Mayor Protim and a second by, I think it was Councilman Lewis this time. Is there any discussion on this item to set the election? Yes, ma'am.
We just, we decide right here now the date, and then that's that?
The state decides the date. We work with Jason Akers, who handles all our bonds, but also helps us with all of the election stuff, and he tells us when the next election is available. We, we don't, yes, yes.
And question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and every election costs the city some money, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, if you're doing it in conjunction with other elections, it doesn't cost you very much. If you do a special election, it costs you more, but sometime there are reasons that you want to do a special election. But, yes, sir, every election has a cost.
Yeah, I know, I kind of just.
Yeah, yeah. And this one was unexpected, but, you know, here's what it is. Anybody else? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all. Well, city of New Iberia is heading to another election. Item 3C.
Resolution 21 dash 36, awarding contract to Tilden A. Bonet Contractor Incorporated for improvements to the Bank Street Park Basketball Court Pavilion.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Reed, a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item? And just to let you know, this is something that we had in the budget. The money was a little short, and Councilwoman Ledbetter, it's her district, so she is utilizing some of her hundred, which is exciting, some of her $100,000 that we each have for district projects to pitch in to where she can make this happen.
Question, ma'am, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. What is, uh, we're doing a pavilion, or we re-
This is to repaint the pavilion.
Oh, to repaint the pavilion?
Yes, the pavilion's in, it's an old metal building. It's in very much need of, of paint and spruce up. I don't think this will be our last project there. This was the first step.
Yeah, because I, I had been there a while, and I didn't, I didn't notice the condition of the.
Yeah, we, we looked at it last year, early last year, and then we kind of cooled out with some of that because of the pandemic, and then as we saw we had money, you know, we want to get it done. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Great, thank you. Item 3D.
Resolution 21 dash 37, endorsing the renewal of the application of Community First Bank for the Restoration Tax Abatement Program.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard. Do I have a second? Council Lewis. Uh, did you have a second? Oh, Mayor Protim. Can't keep up sometimes. Um, is there any discussion on this item?
Yes, so I have some questions about this.
Yes, ma'am. I'll do my best.
So as I was reading through this resolution, um, it's saying that one of the reasons why they're applying for the renewal is because they plan to renovate floors five and six, or the fifth and sixth floor.
Yeah, this is kind of a continuation. In other words, when you give someone these restoration tax abatement, they, you renew them, they can be renewed twice. So you, you get five years, you can get five more. So it can be renewed once. So it's something that most of the businesses that apply for this, that we approve, they taken on a lot of improvements, a lot of infrastructure, and spending a lot of money. In other words, that tower was empty, so the bank took it over and has spent millions of dollars to get it back in commerce, and they moved their business there. They've gotten some tenants, but they are two other floors, so they'd like to continue down that road, and, and the credit they get off of these tax abatements allows them money to keep renovating the building. It's, and it's a kind of a progressive way to spur more projects and take something that was such a big white, literally was white at the time, a big white elephant, and do something with it.
Okay, so I guess I'm just thinking about from a different perspective. So, um, it doesn't have a date in here of when they plan to start the renovations? So, I mean, when you look at it from the opportunity costs associated with that, we're missing out on taxes because, and, but we don't have a date of when they're going to renovate. So I'm just trying to figure out the cost benefit analysis. Do we have a?
I understand. They have five years, and that's the window. So, uh, you know, I can't hold them any tighter than that, but if you look at the total, in, in my mind, anyway, that building would be vacant if we hadn't started down this road to give them these tax, I mean, if they didn't do anything else, it would still be a win, because we've got businesses there, they're paying taxes, they employing people, they're going to lunch, they in our area, and that big empty building is now, you know, a big part of our community. I mean, it's back producing, you know?
No, I get that. I just, there's always an opportunity cost when you, when you do this kind of thing. So I just want to make sure it's beneficial to the citizens of New Iberia.
I understand, I understand. Anybody, anything else? Okay, uh, Mr. Broussard.
Civic, uh, the civic center that we talked about, the last floor up there, I mean, and all this good stuff. Is there any talk a little bit about that being alive?
They keep talking about a community use.
You know, they're fixing up the.
I basically jumped the gun on that. I will admit that. I.
It's nice to think about, you know?
Yeah, it is, and they are very, you know, Community First is very community-minded and does do a lot of things in our community. So I'm not saying it's out of the realm. Actually, when we had Zoom call about redoing this, the bank president, Benny Maynor, went on and on about, you know, community possibilities and those kind of things, but I kind of jumped the gun on that. I, I saw the space and thought it was really cool and kind of tried to steer something. Maybe I shouldn't have, but, uh, they will renovate those floors.
Yeah.
Would it be cool up there? It certainly would, but I'm not sure that I can make that happen.
I just want to make sure it's a little bit alive. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I just got a comment, Mayor, uh, you know, understanding what an abatement does for a corporation. I, I think, I'm, I'm just glad that we're able to do this for Community First Bank as an incentive, because I can tell you firsthand, they've held up a lot in the Western community with revitalization. They were a big partner with us, with Western Neighborhood Association.
I know that.
Uh, with some of the revitalization.
And I considered that from the, you know, from the beginning.
Yeah, they've been, they've been a good partner to the Western. I know that for a fact.
And the leverage we get, in a very nice way, the leverage we get is by doing this, not that they wouldn't, because hell, their name's Community First, but I really feel that when you do something like this, it's much easier to establish more of a partnership, to say, okay, you know, we working with you, we've done this, can you, can, can you help us with this or that? And it just kind of works, because you're, you're doing something for them, and it's good for the community, and then I, I think it just kind of one hand washes the other, and we can probably count on them to be partners in, you know, many things in the future, and, and I would hope that. Any other discussion? Hearing seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, item 3E.
Resolution 21 dash 38, awarding six-month bids.
Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Broussard. I thought we were going to die. Do a, a second, uh, Mayor Protim, Ricky Goslin.
Stop and give him a chance.
Okay. Do, do we have any discussion on these bids? These are the bids we do every six months for all kind of projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for keeping up with all these bids.
Well, we, this is something that we're required to do, and I think it really helps us on the bottom line. Yes, sir.
Don't be, don't be alarmed to see these bid prices starting to creep up.
I know.
If you're tracking up with materials, they, they are tracking in an upward trend.
Well, the sheet of half-inch plywood was $38, and I used to pay $9, so, yeah, you can imagine that in many instances, things are going up. Any other questions or discussion? Everybody's good? Okay, then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. All right, 4A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 21 dash 10, approving the extension of the Cooperative Endeavor Agreements between the City of New Iberia and the New Iberia Museum Foundation in setting a public hearing for May 4, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protim, Ricky Goslin, and a second by Councilman Broussard. Do we have any discussion on this item?
I do.
Yes, sir.
So, so, so from a standpoint of the some of the new ones, could you just give us a brief explanation of how this?
Sure.
I read through it.
Yeah, the city owns the buildings. The, some of the buildings were donated to, all the buildings were donated to us. So the city owns the buildings, and we are responsible to keep the shell, the envelope of the buildings up, okay? But the museum runs the museum day to day, because we could not absorb that cost. They do all the exhibits, they do everything. They pay for all of that, our fundraise to pay for that. We don't. We had entered into an agreement with them, this is a renewal, and they've expanded some. So what Jeff did was just take what was already there, instead of having three and four agreements, and each little piece had an agreement, we just made it concise and got it all in one agreement. So what we're doing is just extending what we already did, except now it encompasses all those spaces, because you know, the Doc Voorhees Wing is new, the Rodriguez Park is ours, they have very little responsibility with that. But what it does is the slo-, the, uh, museum itself, it, it gets everything in one envelope, and so we're extending it, and they will continue to run the museum, we continue to keep up the shell, the, you know, we're responsible for the roof, we're responsible for the air conditioners on the roof, you know, we have some, we got to keep it watertight, but the good news is, from the grants we've gotten, it's all new stuff. What's good about this is that it's new air conditioners, it's new roof for the most part. All of this new building is being renovated. That's a big help, because when you take something on, you know, if it's in bad shape, you know you're going to have a lot of expenses. The good thing is it, it came with money. Uh, through their fundraising efforts, through their connections, uh, you know, we've gotten grant money, and that's going into the, into the building. So that's kind of a plus, that when you take something on, you realize, okay, it's in decent shape.
So do, do we pay the utilities, or do they, you said something in here about we put money in the budget for their utilities?
Yeah, we pay some of the utilities. We do, we do. Yes, Jeff?
Yeah, I think we're saying the current agreement is we'll consider utilities.
Yeah.
That'll be up to the council.
Yeah, because it comes every year, and we vote on it. We have paid them, I'll just, you know, tell you we have, but that comes before us.
Yeah, that, that comes before y'all. So that, that'll be your, your, uh, your decision. And this is part of the package that we presented to the state over time to get the money for the building.
Okay.
So, you know, they're part of the, part of what we have sold the state is the idea that we'll own it, they'll run it, the public, building will get renovated with public funds.
Okay.
Yeah, because they got to know we're going to do what we say. So giving us money for a museum, somebody's got to run the museum, you know, and we didn't want to.
No, I get it.
Yeah. Mr. Broussard, did you have a, Councilman Broussard?
I want to thank, uh, everybody, a lot of private people that have worked so hard to work on that block. It's going to help the downtown, our tourists, and everything. Now, a lot of this money has come from grants, not our personal money from here. We have to, the people are, what y'all spending so much, you know, y'all know it's grants we getting. So it's good to steal our money through grants, but it's helping us a lot. So I want to give a big thank you to everybody. There were a lot of private people that put a lot of money into this museum. Doc Voorhees, you know, big time.
Yep.
So in a big way, uh, we have to thank a lot of individuals and make our town, we're pushing it up. A lot of other towns are trying to follow us, you know, a little bit on that part. But I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for keeping that alive.
Any other comments? Then I'd please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Item five, I'm going to take the lead on this one. Discussion item, future ordinance committee issues to address. What we would like to do is talk about issues that the ordinance committee might address, and just get some buy-in from everybody that, okay, this is what we're doing. Because when I look at the time, it's, it's all a very good thing, and Deidre has chaired that and done a wonderful job of that. When you look at it, it's Jeff Simon, it's Deidre, it's, uh, our city prosecutor, it's, uh, Jane, it's Aaron, it's other people that we bring in sometimes. It's a big group of people that dedicate, you know, hours of time in these meetings and in homework, because there are things that we each take on. I'll, I'll see about this, I'll see about that. So what we want to do is just make sure that we're on the same page, and that we're not ever doing anything that I don't want, I'm not saying that losing a vote is a big deal, because it's not, but the amount of time we put into it, we'd like to know, and it might change some, you know, we have a process. But I'd like to know that everybody's on board with what we're working on, because I don't want to work on something and spend weeks of time and homework and everything else and get it done, and then come over here and have the people say, oh, I don't really want to do that, you know? So I think this is a good way to say, let's bring up an issue. I, I'll put four on here so we could start tonight, and say, is this something that we want to revisit? Is this something that we want to proceed with? And just kind of have just a gen-, we don't even have to vote, just a general discussion where we can get the feel of, is this something we should be fooling with? Because if it's not, just tell me. Because, believe me, between the old ordinances that are out of date and the issues that pop up, we will constantly have something to work on. So I just want to make sure that we're working in the most positive direction, and that our work is not for naught, and that when we bring it to y'all, like I said, you know, we open-minded, we understand things change, we have a process, we are going to bring it up to a point, and then get it in front of you, email it to you, or I'll make you a copy and bring it to you, I'll stick it on your desk, but just so that during the process, you know what's coming, and we can get some feedback, so that when we finally bring it, it's something that, that we all agree with. So. The first item, and I'll just go through them real quick. Uh, what did you say, Jeff? You like to know?
I said, I don't want to start cooking until you place your order.
Yeah, there you go. I kind of like that. What a concise way. That, that's a good one. I had, I, I wanted to make sure you got it, I wanted you to say it. Okay, so like our first items, we had a discussion, and, and none of these have ever moved to the final phase, the first two. The dumpsters of commercial storage, at commercial storage facilities, you know, that's one that we had a ordinance written, we spent a lot of time on it, we brought it forward, the public came and has given, I, I ended up, Ricky, thank you for that, I chaired, he chaired that meeting, I was sick, I watched it on TV, but, uh, you know, is that something, just simply, is that something that we want to continue to proceed with? Is that something that we think we've heard from the public and heard from ourselves and have changed our mind, or whatever? I just need to know. So I'm just going to open the floor for a discussion.
Oh, I was going to say, I was asking, do we answer now, yes or no, and that's it?
I think we have a discussion, and yeah, that's it. Don't move on to something else. That's, that's the point of a discussion.
Okay, gotcha.
This is, you know, sometimes unofficial is a good way to start, you know? I mean, we got to do, follow our rules, but.
She starts off.
Did, anybody have a comment?
I mean, I might as well start off, I'm already talking, huh?
Councilwoman Morcott, you have the floor. You already had it.
Okay, so. I did talk to the lady who was having the issue with this, and, um, it seems like the problem, can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it seems like the problem was actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was a storage unit, the customers were using the townhouse dumpster across the street to dump things. That's what she told me. And so I don't know if this is a citywide issue, if this is an isolated issue, or just this one particular storage unit. So in that instance, again, do we punish everybody and make them all have to get a dumpster, or do, can we figure out a way to fine him? Like, how do you monitor that he's actually, his customers are doing this?
Right.
You know, and make him maybe pay a fine for doing that? I don't know if video evidence is the answer. I don't know how, how do you make somebody pay?
Camera doesn't hurt, and if you dump things in other people's dumpster, that is against the law. We would just have to catch them, but that's, that's an option, you know?
And I'm assuming somebody caught him doing it. That's where it's all coming from. So, but that's all I wanted to say, that, um, you know, I feel like it's only an isolated incident that I'm aware of, just one person, so I don't think that we should make everybody get the dumpster.
Okay.
That's it.
Good. Mr. Broussard?
That night you weren't here, Ricky took over. We had seven people, I think you weren't here that night. We had seven dumpster people.
No, no, I wasn't, I was sitting, I watched it on TV.
I mean, six or seven, nice gentlemen. And we went over all this for like two days, you know, two meetings, and we came up at the end. We went over for an hour and a half, and they all talked how good their units were and all this stuff, and nothing, and that they're only making more ugly if they put a dumpster. So at the end of the meeting, we voted. Well, we attempted to vote. We didn't get a second, a second to push it forward. So Ricky said right there, it's dead, gone, bye-bye. It's over. I don't realize how we have it back again, you know? I don't know if it was, we voted that night to push it forward, but we didn't get a second. So I'm against it.
Okay.
You know, so I don't know. I thought it was, I thought it was going that meeting.
Well, like I said, I'm just cleaning it up, because this is going to be our new way to do the ordinance.
There were seven nice, pretty good, uh, gentlemen, and they, they, they told us they were taking care of their own units.
Got it.
So that's my thing on it. I don't want to see it back again.
Okay, no problem.
No, I mean, concerning any ordinance, concerning any ordinance, I, I just don't want to see us use an ordinance as a tool to go after one person. If it's not a corporate problem, then we should, you know, target that individual legally in whatever way we can, but that's my opinion about all, all ordinances.
That's fine. Anybody else? Yes, uh, Jeff, I see you got your hand up. But, yeah.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
The night we had the discussion about that, yes, a lot of people did show up in numbers, um, and they said what policies they had in place for their particular storage units. Now, oftentimes what people say is not actually what's going on. A policy is one thing, okay? You can have anything on paper, and really not follow through with it. Personally, I don't know. I remember the complaint, and that's why we put the ordinance there. Every other business has to have some kind of dumpster disposal. If you have over five units in an apartment, four, over four, for four, you don't need a dumpster, but if you have five, you need a dumpster. But yet you can have a storage facility with 80, 90, 100 units, and not have a dumpster, nowhere to put excess garbage. Now, I know everything that you put in the storage unit, you don't always take out. So what are they doing with it, since they don't have a place to put it technically? So I'm just saying that it's going somewhere, whether it's going in your dumpster, or somebody else's dumpster, or they're hauling away in a truck, I don't know. But I'm pretty sure that they have stuff that are left in the units, and that needs to be taken away. So I'm just saying that, uh, you know, the businesses have to have a dumpster, but these people don't. And what's fair for one should be fair for all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. I'm just going around the table, I figured, man.
So one of the ladies who spoke that night actually had gone around at lunchtime and taken pictures of all the units, and she showed us pictures, and every single one of them were clean. And for someone who's moved, recently moved, I can tell you that I had my stuff at Climate Control on Jefferson Terrace. That place is spotless. I've never seen any stuff anywhere. I mean, I had to take everything out, and I had to take it wherever I was going to take it. I took it to my house, because of my stuff, I wanted to keep it. Um, and then the second time, same thing, clean. I've never seen any junk around that place. So I, I get what Ms. Ledbetter is saying, but I have, I don't have any evidence that their policies aren't working. So I'm not sure I'm ready to add some sort of burden to them, getting an expensive, um, dumpster to put on their property, when I have no evidence that there's a problem, except for that one particular issue. It doesn't sound like it was on, there was, you know, some other issue. So where I stand is that I need evidence that we have a real problem. One's not evidence to me. I need a pattern, I need to see other complaint, complaints come in here saying that this is a problem, because I myself have not experienced that. When I've, when I've worked with the, uh, storage unit, I've not seen any trash anywhere. That's my thoughts.
Jeff?
And one of the purposes.
Go around the table.
Yeah, one of the purposes of having a discussion, you know, we don't have to get to the bottom of this issue tonight, but if we bring it up, then before the committee does the boring, technical stuff, you know, we'll at least know whether or not you want to proceed. And also, if we bring this up, and the newspaper covers the topic, and people out there in TV land are watching, if it is a problem, you know, people can contact their council. So I think it's a way for, uh, the public to communicate to the council. The council can communicate with each other, so by the time we're solving a problem, we know it's a problem. And, um, and I think that's true of all, you know, all these things here. So I'm glad to see this, not because I'm a, you know, advocate for any of these particular things, I just think we need a process that communicates more in the beginning.
I agree.
I agree. Ricky, did I forget anything?
Yeah, no. So I think, I was going to reiterate on what Jeff said, and I listened to all you guys' comments, and respect all your comments. And, but, you know, eight years on the parish council, and now on the city council, I've always took pride into solving resolutions by public input. I think a government can make rules and enforce rules all day long, but they're not truly rules that affect your constituents until you hear from the people that is affecting. And I've heard loud and clear what affected them. I think we had some isolated instances, we really did. I think we, that, that's just an isolated instance at its best, but most of them have policies and procedures to address their needs in their storage units. And I think it's working effectively and efficiently currently. Will it change? Possibly, but I, you got to remember that we, we can write all the laws we want, but if we can't govern them, and we can't enforce them, then what good are they? So I think we, we send a message out to businesses that were watching them. and they got policies and procedures, correct their issues, you're gonna see more good than passing a resolution, in my opinion.
All right. Well, that was our first one, so, like I said, if we do this, we'll know where we're heading. Our next one was, we talked about this one, and had quite a couple of meetings and discussions about this item. The next one is the garage sale ordinance. So, does anyone have an opinion on the garage sale ordinance? Uh, Councilman Marcott, you had your hand up first, I guess we're going around the table again, but this is good, this is government at work, this is what we're supposed to be doing.
Okay, um, I've heard my constituents loud and clear, and it's a no, I mean, we can't do that to everybody, just because of one or two residents.
And I will find another way to correct my, and that's the other point of this, I don't mean to cut you off, but I need, when we have isolated incidents, we had one in St. Peter Street, a long time ago, we had one in your district, and we had one on Marie Street, that were continuous garage sales. So if we don't enforce it this way, I'll find another way. Uh, you know, and that's sometimes what I need to hear. In other words, I'll go bust them, 'cause they don't have an occupational license, it's a harder thing to do, and you gotta prove it, and it causes Jimmy, look at his face back there, it causes him a lot of angst, because it's a hard thing to prove, but, you know, I'll get them on the junk ordinance, one time, the one on, uh, I don't mean to be ugly, but one of the ones, there wasn't one good thing there. Well, I looked at it, and I said, I could almost send the junk ordinance here, 'cause they're not gonna sell any of this. I'm taking a chance if I do that, but you know, we'll.
You'd like to.
Yeah, and I like, if I say it's bad, it's pretty bad. So, but you know, so in these discussions, sometimes it'll just kinda ring home, okay, I still have a problem I gotta fix, I just gotta find another way to fix it. Anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
It's fine, but I just want to tell you, you know that it's a no.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, I'm gonna go around the table, these are fun.
Same, same message. From what I heard last time, it was an ordinance against one person, from what I gathered. And I don't wanna, uh, you know, I don't wanna be in the business of making an ordinance that's gonna affect people corporately, and it's for one individual.
I understand. Thank you. Mr. Rusar?
Estate sale. Estate, nice home. Ten, fifteen cars around the house, we know it's coming. And we love going in that house, and at the estate sale. It's a big, what you call that, extended garage sale, but it is done right. And the people come from out of town sometime and put them on, and we enjoy it. You know, that's the same, nobody in the neighborhood, in my neighborhood, our neighborhood, we have one that's last three days, three days it lasted, not a peep. You know, so people like Mr. Marlowe. They like going to garage sales, they like going to yard sales. We have to watch who we stomping on some toes. Now, enough is enough, I don't want a year-round thing next to me, but there's gotta be some other way we can handle it, than making all these rules and regulations, I mean, ten or fifteen rules and regulations you had for yard sales, you know?
The other thing that matters is when you start to regulate stuff, then, and, and you have to look at all the parts and pieces.
Parking lot, the parking lot. You know, you have to have a parking lot, who's gonna get a parking lot that, that, in your yard, it's raining wet, to go park them all over in the yard? It's still gonna park in the street, it's a public street. So there's some things about that, but I wanna get in about the estate sales, they're gonna be caught in the middle too. You know, and have a lot of good estate sales, come get the good stuff out of that house.
Thank you, Mr. Rusar, that's funny.
We, uh, we gotta care about some of the people that like doing what they like to do, and we cutting it down. Now, we have to find a way to help the ones that go year-round, and see how we can put them down.
That's good.
Other ways.
Yes, sir, thank you. Ricky, you wanna go now, just, you good? You good, okay. I might as well ask.
You know, I, I guess, when there's nothing particularly that addresses the issue that we're talking about, like the mayor said, you do have to find, maybe, you have to be creative. But if there was something in place, it wouldn't have to be created, it's there, you do what you have to do, and, and it's over with. And that's the purpose of an ordinance. And I just want us, as council members, to know that this is part of our job. You know, putting rules and regulations in place to help the community. If you're not doing anything wrong, it's not gonna affect you, one way or the other. It's there for those people who are skating, because there's nothing in place. So, just realize that we always can't be Mr. and Mrs. Goody Two Shoes. You know, we have to do some things that maybe ruffle some feathers. Uh, some feathers, not all feathers. Maybe some of the feathers that, uh, you know, we don't wanna ruffle, but, I mean, when you take this job, you have to have a backbone, and you have to be able to make some decisions. And if I get ten calls from people saying no, but I represent five thousand people, that's not a whole lot of calls. How about all those other people that didn't say anything? You know, you only get the negative part most of the time. Nobody calls you about being, you know, the positive. Good example at the town hall, everything was negative. People wanted to say positive, those people that wanted to say positive things didn't say anything. So it looked like it was really a negative kinda thing, but it really wasn't. 'Cause you had a lot of people that could've been positive there. So I'm just saying, let us do our job, and, um, be courageous in it.
Thank you.
So, I understand exactly what Councilman Ledbetter is saying, however, I think in this case, this particular ordinance actually would put a burden on everybody. Because if I wanna sell two things, I gotta go get an ordinance, and I can only do it four times a year. So to me, and I gotta provide parking, to me, that ordinance was actually going to put a burden on all the citizens. So they were all affected, and I don't know that we had a big enough problem for us to affect everybody in our community. So, I, I, I don't think it's necessary, because I don't think we have enough of a problem. I do understand, and I do believe that we have to be courageous, and I do believe that we have to, you know, make some tough decisions sometimes, but I think this decision, we probably wouldn't hear from anyone until they had to go get a, a permit. They had to drive over here to get a permit to sell two items on their driveway, they would then be really upset. Because they'd be like, why, you mean to tell me I gotta go get a permit to sell a lawnmower and a weed eater on my driveway? So you're not gonna hear from those people until that time, then you, but it's too late, you already have the ordinance in place. So, I just feel like this is one of those things where we needed to take a step back, and we needed to make sure that we weren't making a decision about, for everyone, that actually, really, we only had a handful of people that we really needed to talk to. So, that's my thoughts.
Heard everybody that wants to talk on this one? Good. I, I appreciate it, and if, you know. And, and like I said, we're gonna still do our jobs. If a continuous yard sale pops up again, I'll have to get creative, this tool would be nice to use, but I'll just have to think of something else. In other words, we're not gonna abandon our community, and we're not gonna say, oh, well, you know, can't help you, because when they have had these, they have been a problem. Uh, so anyway, that, that's, I hear that one loud and clear, and we'll just have to figure out another answer when one comes. Or, I'm gonna keep the ordinance we did, and put it in the drawer, and if we wanna look at it again, if we have issues, that's the beauty of government, we'll bring it back, there's nothing we can't do or undo, so if we would need something in the future, you know, we, we look at it again. The next one, the next two are new ones, okay, the next two are, are new issues that we're asking, do you want us to head in this direction? The first, the third one, is a noise ordinance. I really feel that I need to revamp the noise ordinance. Something I've started doing is going to the PD and saying, how many complaints you got about, like, this is one that I know. My police officers need a better tool with the noise ordinance. We have tons of complaints that come, uh, from different parts of town, um, most of them are at night, but we are having complaints, and the noise ordinance we have in place does not allow my police officers to totally do their job, and shut some things down that should be shut down, that are affecting neighbors, that are affecting businesses. So this is one that I would like to pursue, uh, but again, I want the feedback, because I, I do think it's a tool that, I'm telling you, it's a tool that I can't do my job as efficiently, and the police can't do their job as efficiently with what we have in place right now. So, well, you wanna just keep going around the table, or?
Why not?
Let's just keep going around the table. Okay, well, everybody's gonna have a comment, you know that, okay.
So do you have an idea how you'd revamp it, like?
Well, we're gonna do some research, and we have already started, uh, Aaron has requested from other communities their noise ordinances. Uh, we've reached out to LMA, um, so we're gonna, if you tell me to work on it, there's a lot of homework to do. So what we're gonna do is get other communities, and the way they've addressed, just that decibel meter does not work. You don't get the base, so you're standing at a place, you're, you're watching it, the windows are rattling, and the decibel meter does not go high enough in our current ordinance to shut them down. Yet, people can't sleep, they, they're rattling the windows, we've had a bed and breakfast closed, because they, their people couldn't sleep, uh, you know, and a big operation. So, you know, those things are legitimate problems, so what we have in place doesn't work. What we're gonna do, if you tell me, give me the inkling that you wanna head in that direction, we're gonna do a bunch more research, and then come back to you. And again, remember our process, we're gonna start fleshing it out, and we're gonna get it back in your hands before we bring it forward, so that I get your, we all get your input. But it's important that you give us, at that midway point, when we started to flesh it out, it's important that you give us input, so that I still know you're in the game, or you might have a great idea that we didn't think of. Uh, and then we can finish fleshing it out, the committee can do their work, and then we can bring it to you. But now, we got a bulletproof way, we have all been involved in the process. So anyway, but to tell you exactly what we're gonna do, I don't know, we wanna do the homework, but I wanted to make sure that y'all were on board.
Yes, I'm on board.
Okay?
Yeah, uh, one of my mentors shared with me years ago, they say, some people don't know what they don't know. And part of our job is, and a big part, a larger part, is to be informative, to let our community know what they can and cannot do. Give you an example, and I'm not gonna, you know, I have people come to me all the time, and they say, when is y'all council meeting, I wanna go over there and, and talk. And I explain to them, well, there's an agenda, and you can only speak on an agenda item, and you have to be there fifteen minutes before the meeting starts, and then you can speak on an agenda item. You know, a lot of people, I'm gonna say fifty percent of our community does not know that. It's just like our ordinances, people don't know. So we have to inform the public about the things that are causing problems. About the noise, uh, personally, I, I don't like it, I used to love it when I was younger. I'm fifty now, and it scares me.
That's why we gotta call y'all twice at a meeting.
That's right. It scares me, it makes me nervous, but, you know, I walk outside and say, y'all gotta shut it down, you know? And, but, I don't know, what is the current ordinance concerning noise, it's just?
We have one, and there's, we use a decibel meter.
So it's not the ordinance that's the problem, it's the process in which we find out if they're making too much noise?
No, it's, it's the way the ordinance is written. We're gonna end up reworking the ordinance, rewriting the ordinance, and it'll have other parameters besides just a decibel. Um, it might be that you can hear it from so much, some communities are, you can hear it from so much of a distance. Uh, you know, there are other ways that we can judge, you know, a, and we could get into, and we're not going to. It's really loud music, and parties, and those kinda things, 'cause you could say, my, my neighbor has a loud lawnmower. You could say, you know, that guy's weed eater's too loud, you know, that's not what we're looking for. We're trying to work something that controls the chronic problems. Uh, I can tell you that we have a couple of bars downtown that break it constantly. Sometime you'll have a new business that isn't any kinda bar-related, but they might have a party at the end of their night. And then you ride by, and they're louder than the bars, we've had that recently. You'll have private parties that people just get out of control, they're just having fun, I'm not knocking them, but I have to have a, a new tool in the toolbox.
And that last thing, 'cause you mentioned about lawnmowers, I mean, I overlooked that, 'cause there are some neighborhoods that, uh, some HOAs that, like, you can't light, light your lawnmower before six o'clock in the morning, and then you can't.
Light it up.
You know, I'm.
Right. I like that.
'Cause you lighten up the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And like I said, I'm not trying to be petty, and I don't think.
Six o'clock either, you know, or seven o'clock, whatever the time is.
And I don't think any of us are trying to be petty, we're just trying to fix the big problem.
Right.
You know, the chronic, big problems, and, and this is one, you know?
So this is just the beginning in looking at this.
Yes, yes, and you, you're giving me, and the ordinance committee, permission to say, hey, we like that, go do your work. And then we'll do our work, we'll get back to you about halfway through with an outline, or three quarters of the way through with kind of a rough draft. You'll look at that, and you'll give us your input, and I welcome, we want your input, and then after that, we'll put the finishing touches on it and bring it back. Now, that's easy to say, and that's, but it's countless hours, it's, it takes a long time to put this together, it's a lot of people and a lot of man hours, women hours, whatever, to make it work. But it is important, you know? Thank you. Mr. Rusar?
I've been in a lot of houses, we've been serving a long time. Noise, come see, I go, rattling all the way through the house. You call the police, they can't help us. You know, let's give them something that we can get help, just generally, be, yes, we can do something about this, man, it's terrible. And that is rattling windows, I mean, through the whole house, I can see their point.
And sometime we can shut them down, but sometime we help them.
You know, we have to give them some ammunition, whatever it is, decibels, I've heard that too much, you know? But we've been serving a long time, and that's one of the biggest gripes I've had.
It is, it is.
Is go to their houses, and I see exactly what they're talking about, we call the police, we can't do nothing.
And, and they'll go, and they'll talk to them, and sometimes they, people are, we have good people. Sometimes people, you know, voluntarily tone it down, sometimes they tone it down till the cops are out the driveway, you know, I mean, it's, uh, it just depends on the people.
Certain time.
Yeah.
To cut off, but then they'll.
That's good, well, I say, we're looking, we'll be looking into it, if you tell me. Okay. Ricky?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna comment on noise, because it's broken, and we just need to fix it. But what I will make a comment on is, is the process that we're enduring tonight. We went through two already, and we've obviously seen that there was no need to move forward, now we went through the third one, and, and we see a, a problem that needs to be governed, and I think the process is, is gonna work extremely well, and especially on this noise one, 'cause I think it is broken, and we need to get the mayor to it, I really do. I mean, I'm getting, I'm not being hypocritical or nothing, but I'm getting called from church choirs. And I, and I went seeing them, and I can't fix it, and it's frustrating, you know, and I, I mean, can't fix it, you know, so, uh, but I'm, I'm glad to see that we brought this one up, I think we can, we can make a huge impact on this ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, okay, you, you just get it coming, 'cause you're on the ordinance, she's the head of the ordinance committee, thank you.
So.
Councilman, Councilman Marie.
I'm, I'm kind of torn, because one, I do believe we need a noise ordinance, 'cause I live on the corner, and so I hear the noise, I'm one of those people, and I get complaints from the elderly people in my community all the time. On the other hand, I want us to be careful when it comes to businesses. Because they're in business, and, you know, they're not closed, and so, I, I just don't want this to be a situation where we, we shut down their business early, and they're in some business district, and maybe they're, maybe it's residential, I don't know, but I just want us to be careful about the businesses, that we don't affect their ability to, to make money by having this noise ordinance so strict that they can't, they can't keep their business open after a certain time.
Seeing now, we've shut businesses down because our noise ordinance is not good enough, and we have. I mean, Chris Jordan closed the Guggenheim, that was three bed and breakfast rooms, and he, he had to give back, and he documented it, he, we've met with him. He had to give back so many deposits, and so many times that people checked out in the middle of the night, and said, I can't sleep, I can't take it, so many times that, uh, you know, the next morning, they were like, you know, there was a fight in the street, there was loud music, there was noise, there were, you know, I, I can't take it, I'm canceling the rest of my reservations, that guy shut down that, so noise shut down that business, and I mean, it had a big factor to do with that. When the movie came to town, the Christmas movie that we recruited really hard and got them here, uh, we set them up, they had rooms there, they, they complained the next day, they were all calling me, where'd you put me? You know, the room's really nice, but, you know, we didn't sleep at all, we, we got a movie to, to make.
No, I get that, I get that.
So it kinda works both ways.
Yeah.
We'll just have to be sensitive, and, and like I said, looking at what other communities do, besides us, you know? Never invent what you can steal, so if we look at five or six communities, which we will from the LMA, which Aaron's already gonna do some lag work, we'll be able to look and probably find some, some creative ideas, because you're right, I do not wanna hinder anybody, but on the flip side, you know, we, we, we have to do more than we're doing now.
Well, I mean, I, I think about when I, when I go to New Orleans, if I stay in the French Quarter, I don't expect to sleep. So if I come and I stay downtown, New Iberia, and there's a bunch of bars around me, I kinda know what I'm getting into. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying that we, I just want us to make sure we're not making so restrictive that these businesses can't operate, that's all.
I understand, and we're really blessed to have a diverse downtown that has all kinda stuff.
Right.
In other words, we got restaurants, we got businesses, we got a construction company, we got architecture firms, we got engineering firms, we are one of the few downtowns, and we have residents, and we asking for more residents, because the big untapped potential is all the second story of all those buildings. You know, and people are beginning to live downtown, it is a mix. So where you can go to Sugar Mill Pond or River Ranch and get a big old plastic fake community, that is a mixed use, that is part residential. that is a mixed use, that is part residential, part commercial. We've had that for two hundred years, hundred and fifty years. So our downtown has real history and real opportunity to be that mix that they spend millions of dollars to create somewhere else, and ours is real. So, you know, it has real history, so it's gonna be a balancing act.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I lived downtown when I lived in Atlanta. I lived right off of, um, Peachtree Street. There were bars, the, the Fox, and all that was all around me. So I kinda knew that at night, if I need to get some sleep, I take a sleeping pill. 'Cause I'm gonna knock myself out, otherwise, I'm gonna hear the noise on that. That's the fun of living down there, the, the activity, the excitement of being down there, so take night justice, I just want us to be cautious. Residents, okay, I don't want those loud, that loud noise next to my house either. But when I'm downtown and down in this, on Main Street, when I get in that area, I'm not sure I'm expecting it to be quiet. Just a thought.
Well, that's why we doing this, and that's why you're gonna have input all along the way. Which is gonna make it fun, this is, you know, this is a good thing. Thank you. Okay, so we covered that one, and our last one is, we have food truck ordinances, okay? So if you're on our city streets, you have to get insurance and you have to buy a permit. We're beginning to have inquiries about people who would be other types of mobile businesses. I'll give you one example, I saw this in Nashville, and that's the example now. In Nashville, a lady bought four, I'm a car guy, VW transporters, they cost about thirty thousand dollars apiece, they look like a truck, and the sides fold down, they're really cool. They're from the sixties and seventies, and she made them flower trucks. And so all of Nashville, you have these transporter flower trucks, and that's her business. We had someone inquire about doing a mobile flower business here. But we don't have anything in place for that. You know, you know that they, you would want them to buy a permit, and you would want them to have insurance because they're on our city streets. Now, if you take a mobile flower business and you park it on your own private property, uh, we shouldn't have anything to say about it, because you're on your own property, you already pay taxes on that property, you already doing something. We have that, uh, caveat with the food trucks. If you're completely on private property, you don't go on city streets, you don't go on city sidewalks, that's not your, you know, you don't have to worry about that. But, this is a business that has inquired, so this is one that I would ask us, you know, if you think it's worthwhile to work on, I would think they have to have insurance, and they have to have, you know, some permit fee. Other than that, I'm not sure what else we would wanna regulate. Um, but that's one that I'm bringing, because I don't have a tool in the toolbox. And sometimes, I guess I could just say, hey, I don't have anything against it, I don't have anything for it, knock yourself out. Uh, but by doing that, if something becomes a problem, it's right back at, at, at my desk to deal with. All right, and at your desk. So, anyway, that's, that's the next one, that's the last one for tonight. So I'm gonna go around the table again.
It always seems fair, food trucks have to have a permit, that anyone selling out of a vehicle should have to have a permit.
Henry?
So I would say, yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Good, thank you. Go with that? Okay, thank you. Mr. Bruceard?
Good answer, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, boy, this is, uh, Ricky?
I, I think, you know, again, I think we're, we're getting into shady ground, I think we, we need to govern businesses at some level. We don't wanna be overburdening someone getting fines in our community. So we, we wanna be cautiously optimistic on what kind of burdens we put on them, because if we put too many burdens, they're gonna cease to exist.
As is Agaraj?
And, and we want them to be an intricate part of our community. So I, I, I wanna, really wanna study these regulations, I think there's some rules we can make, but I think that we don't wanna be burdening some on them, and, uh, I would think that, uh, costly optimistic, we can, we can, we can accomplish that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Of course, my thought is, if we regulate, um, food trucks, we need to regulate all businesses of that type. If they move around, whether they're on wheels or not, if you pushing a cart down the street, you know, um, and you selling something out of it, you need to have a permit in order to do that.
Okay.
So, should be across the board for all of them.
That's fine. Yes, ma'am.
So are we saying a permit and insurance? I mean, how does that work? 'Cause I don't know.
They would give you proof of insurance. We don't supply the insurance, of course, but they would give us proof of insurance that they have insurance. 'Cause they're on our city streets. And, and using our, you know, sidewalk and everything else. And they would, you know, pay a permit fee, I don't know, you know, whatever we would set as the permit fee.
So would that include somebody like the little hot tamale man on St. Peter Street?
He, he, he would have a permit. And he's, he falls into the food trucks, he already has one, but he, he, you know, 'cause you want somebody to have a liability policy, so that if somebody comes, and they're on our streets, and they trip, and they break their ankle on the curb, you know, that person's insurance is gonna cover. Because guess where they come in if they don't have insurance? They come to us. So we have to protect, that's part of our job, is to protect the city's liability, so that's why you want them to have insurance. Uh, and then the permit fee is just a fee so you know who's in your town, you're, you know, you're not trying to be burdensome on, on businesses, but you need to know who's there. You know, the, the people that are unregulated, that come and sell, I don't mean to be ugly, but, uh, you know, something that's not up to par, you don't want that in your town, you know? You don't want someone that is not regulated, that doesn't have a permit, that just shows up on the side of the road, 'cause you don't know what they're selling to your citizens. You know, so to me, uh, it wouldn't be very burdensome, it would just be a simple permit and a proof of insurance. That's what I'm thinking. But what we're gonna do is the same thing we, we've been doing with all the rest of these, we're gonna look at what other communities do, we're gonna call LMA, we're gonna get some research, and this is just for you to say, yeah, go research it, you know?
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm thinking in my mind that there might be a difference between somebody who's selling flowers, maybe, I don't know, and somebody who's selling food. 'Cause I would think that the health department would also need to be involved with the food.
But that's other eight, right, but that's, you know, we, we play our game, they play their game. In other words, his jersey is to be the, the food, the guy, with the food safety, you know, that's their take. Us is to say, permit and insurance, we don't regulate the food, uh, you know, another agency does.
Okay, I guess I'm, um, I'm not, I'm not totally against it, I just feel like that's one that we probably need more information on.
Okay, I agree.
Because there's just so many different types of businesses.
I agree, and that's the point of this, for you to tell me it's worthwhile, go get some more information.
I need more information.
Okay, good, that's a good answer, that's the whole point. Jeff, and then I'll go back to you.
And one thing you're gonna hear is, you've got some local businesses that have brick and mortar buildings, and employees, and occupational licenses, that pay property taxes.
Oh, yeah.
And they're real sensitive about mobile businesses moving in.
They are.
And not having all those expenses and competing with them. And doing, and, you know, having a shop on the public street, so.
Yep.
Yeah, but, but all of the, all this balancing act, I mean, that's what a city council's for.
Yeah, that's what we do. That's what we do. Yeah, 'cause you got some businesses that, you know, hate food trucks. I get calls from one gentleman who I'm friends with all the time, he, he can't stand them.
That's what I was thinking of.
I, I know who you're thinking of, 'cause he calls me all the time. Anyway. All right, well, this is good, this is, you know? Oh, Mr. Bruceard, you got a second comment, round two?
He hit it right on the head. I always, most all the time, go to the brick and mortar restaurant. You know, they, they have something to say about all this, too, a little bit.
They do.
You know, darn it, I mean, uh, that's who, that's who we go, and we know it's, it's all clean, it's been inspected a lot more, I think, than maybe something else.
Well, the food trucks, to tell you the truth, I own a food truck, it's inspected every six months, a restaurant's inspected once a year. They're harder on food trucks than they are on a restaurant.
We should, uh, do a bit of look out for our restaurants.
That's fine.
And flower shops.
That's fine. Well, thank y'all, that's, uh, that kinda ends it, but I think we have a new process that I think is gonna be good, and thank you for your input. And, uh, I'll go to Councilman's remarks. I'll start with, uh, Councilwoman Marie. Give you a break. I mean, I've been on your side all night.
Okay, so, um, first of all, thank you for the new process, I like it. I mean, I feel like we get a, a chance to kinda give our thoughts before we have to vote on something, 'cause I hate you guys to do all that work, and then you don't get to vote. Um, well, also I want to remind the community that we're having a community meeting downtown at the Masonic Building on May thirteenth at five thirty PM to talk about revitalizing the downtown area. And, um, I hope that the people in the community will come out and kinda share some of their thoughts with us, and hopefully some people will be really interested in doing this, and then we can get something started.
What time?
Five thirty PM. Um, also, uh, St. Edward's Catholic Church is going to be offering COVID-nineteen vaccine on April twenty-eighth from one to six PM. Uh, and for those who don't know, St. Edward's is located on one seventy-five Ambassador LaMell. It's gonna be the Pfizer vaccine, so it's a two-dose vaccine, and it's gonna be held in the church. So you'll just, you can go to the website for LDH and sign up, and then get your appointment and show up that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ledbetter?
And I just wanna add to that, since St. Edward's is my church, um, you can call the rectory, uh, you can get that number off the internet. And, um, Canon also said that if you don't have an appointment, come on by anyway on that day, on the twenty-eighth, and they will register you, so they want as many people as possible to come out and, um, get the vaccination. So please, you know, if you haven't, anybody over sixteen now, sixteen and over, uh, can get the vaccine. So, uh, please do it, and make sure that you call or, or drop by on that day, on the twenty-eighth, between one and six PM. And that's all.
Thank you. Ricky?
I can't, I can't believe Ms. Ledbetter didn't make a comment on how Jefferson Terrace drained extremely well than the recent rain event last week.
We got phase two coming, though. Don't jinx it.
Public, I just wanted to know, seven inches last week of rain, I rode around town, and the city drained really well, Public Works had a couple issues they addressed, you know, I noticed Jefferson Terrace was really, uh, much, much better than, you know, that's money well spent, and, 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 you know, going down forward and other improvements gonna be tremendous for that area, but, uh, I think our residents hear to all the warnings, and, uh, everybody stayed safe, so kudos to that.
Thank you. Mr. Bruceard?
Uh, May twelfth, our plaque, for our past First Lady, our Governor Kathleen Babino-Blanco from our town at the Gazelle Bowl on Main Street. She did a lot, a lot of work to help communities, not only in Yarboria, all over Louisiana. So, we appreciate her being recognized. Deepest condolences to the men lost on the oilfield boat last week out of Grand Island. It was very, very serious. Nobody ever wants to get caught in that kind of situation. Election for recreational parks in, uh, Department Renewal Tax. Not a new tax. Saturday the twenty-fourth, help us keep our parks recreational department up. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lewis?
Uh, Mayor, uh, said I wasn't gonna talk about, but, you know, uh, the case was over, the trial was over the day with George Floyd and Chauvin, I mean, the world was watching. And, uh, you know, I believe justice was served, and it gives us hope. And as a council person, as council people, you know, I just pray that this never happens in our community. I'm grateful that a light was shined, shone, or, or light was shed on this. And that, you know, we just be mindful that it could have been in our community. We have a great police department. Uh, I don't expect those things to happen, I think we have a good police department, uh, professional standards. We haven't heard anything yet, but it's just good to know that, uh, God's work was carried out today. And justice prevailed, 'cause, you know, the courthouse was a, it's, 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 it's become a, for African-Americans, it's become a symbol of, well, for the country's been a symbol of justice, but for African-Americans, it's been a symbol of injustice. And you have to kinda walk in these shoes to know that. But today, I think, uh, major steps were taken today, and proven to everybody that the system does work. So I have.
Well, Mr. Bruceard took all my comments, but, um, no, I'm just joking. Uh, my dad's birthday is tomorrow, so I just want to tell him happy birthday. And, uh, also I do want some condolences to the family members of those who were lost, and, uh, still praying for those who are unaccounted for, you know, hopefully they can be brought back safely. Uh, we'll just continue praying, that's all we can do at this point, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Mayor.
Mr. Bruceard?
Forgot to put, uh, three PM, uh, for that plaque.
Okay.
Three PM, on May the twelfth, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, we have an MS stormwater survey on our website, citynibria.com, under the Public Works section, we ask people to respond to that. It, it kinda gives us points in the MS four, that's a bunch of, uh, state requirements that were mandated to do, but they didn't send any money. Uh, but it's all about drainage and stormwater runoff, so we constantly asking for people to kinda help with that. It, it doesn't take long. Of course, our special election for the park, Saturday the twenty-fourth, Mr. Bruceard brought that up. It is not a new tax, and that is what funds our parks, we really need that money and need that approval. Um, our next meeting is May the fourth. We still have properties for sale on civicsource.com, adjudicated property. And with that, our last promotion to Jerry.
Motion.
Thank you.